Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for your time tonight. My name is Rob Terry. I'm the statewide land use training director with the Office of the Property Rights Ombudsman. I have the opportunity to introduce the presenters tonight and to assist a little bit with the presentations where appropriate as well. So, very grateful that everybody could make it tonight. A couple house cleaning items before we get started. Everybody that's here, please make sure that you have signed in on the sign-in sheet so you're getting appropriate credit for the training, for the hours that are going in here tonight. And just a reminder, if you can please make sure that your writing is legible. I know that's something I struggle with all the time. We want to make sure that the name is very clear, the email address is very clear, so you're going to be able to get the appropriate credit. So, we have two presenters tonight. Mr. Todd Godfrey, who is with Hayes, Godfrey &amp; Bell, also does some consulting services for the Utah League of Cities and Towns, years and years of experience and a great presentation he'll have to share with us tonight. And then Mr. Will Summercorn, who is, I think, really done it all in the planning world and certainly has, I would say, double the experience of anybody else in my professional opinion. So, some great content coming your way tonight. And this is also being livestreamed and recorded as well, so it can be referenced later, but then also, you know, a reminder, just make sure you know that you are being recorded. Any of the questions that you ask of the presenters, because it is being recorded, they will repeat the question back to you so that we'll make sure that it's going to be recorded and clear, and then that way, when it's being referenced later, you know, the watcher isn't trying to guess what the question was and how the presenters are answering that. So, with that, we'll jump right into it, and we're going to get started first with Mr. Todd Godfrey. Todd?
Thanks. Good evening, everybody. Like Rob said, I'm from a law firm called Hayes, Godfrey, Bell. I've been practicing in municipal law and specifically in the land use area for just about 30 years. My firm acts as the city attorney for a number of small cities, and we do consulting work for cities all across the state. I don't know how I get roped into this stuff all the time, but I do. How many of you have had to sit through one of my presentations before? Okay, I'm really sorry. I hope we don't plow the same ground over and over again. I hope we get to talk about something new. One of the things I always like to say at the front end of my presentations, "I am not well-organized enough, I am not so well-prepared that your questions will throw me off track." And I prefer to be interrupted with questions as we go. I don't know if the folks online have the ability to raise a hand, ask a question, or do anything like that. If not, I'm really sorry. If so, I hope somebody will tell me if there's a hand raised from somebody online, because I will never know. I was asked tonight to talk specifically about the law of conditional uses. One of the things I always like to do at the start is to find out kind of the experience base of the folks in the room. So, all planning commissioners, is that correct? Yeah?
City planner.
Okay, so some staff. You're just here making sure they are here, though, right?
Yeah.
I got it. How many of you have been sitting on a planning commission for less than a year? So, a few. Nobody is here who has not sat for a meeting yet, right? So, you've actually been in a meeting as a planning commissioner? No? Yeah, okay. If you haven't, I just wanted to give a little bit of the powers and duties stuff that we talk about. When I meet with your elected officials and I talk to them, one of the things I always try to do is orient them to understand their form of government, to understand their role and their powers, and to make sure that we get them to a place where they feel comfortable acting within the lane of their authority. With planning commissioners, that's a little bit easier. You have all the hard work and you have none of the authority. That's what people like to say. What I really think, though, is that you are, in fact, the first face of your communities. In most cases, for most members of the public, you will be the face of the city at some point in time. You're the first thing a ton of our citizens see. And so, the way you conduct yourselves, the way you handle your business, all of that is a really remarkable reflection on your communities. If citizens really only ever come to a planning commission meeting and they never get to a council meeting, you're what they remember. And so, your role is actually tremendously significant. When we start to talk about land use in this country, we have to think about, I think, some of the big-picture things in what we talk about. You'll hear a term sometimes called Euclidean zoning. Have you heard that term yet? Euclidean zoning is a reference to kind of traditional zoning and the way it works. The establishment... Say that again?
It's very geometric.
Very geometric. The establishment of zones and districts with particular uses authorized and restrictions on buildings within those zones. The reason we call it Euclidean zoning is the first United States Supreme Court case that really blessed the zoning power was a 1926 case out of Euclid, Ohio, a suburb of Cleveland. And so, we refer to traditional zoning power as Euclidean zoning. Conditional uses have grown out of a very traditional exercise of the zoning power. So, this is our state definition of what a conditional use is. A land use because of unique characteristics or potential impact of the land use on the municipality, neighbors, or adjacent land uses may not be compatible in some areas or may be compatible only if certain conditions are required that mitigate or eliminate the detrimental impacts. That's a Utah state law definition. First thing I want you to see is it, in my opinion, kind of turns the traditional idea of a conditional use on its head. Because when our public, or when us, who are not educated in land use law, hear the term "conditional use," I think our tendency is to think, "Well, maybe it's appropriate and maybe it's not." What I'm telling you is, in the general zone classification where a conditional use is identified as conditional, the legislative determination has been made that it is, in fact, appropriate in that zone area. So, that's something that we have to see differently, I think, in our land use law. I don't know how well that understood that was in this state until maybe the last 10 years. Wolf?
Yeah, I mean, people used to pretty much think of it like you said, "Maybe it could be allowed and maybe not."
Well, there was a traditional zoning practice in this state that kind of made the rounds for a period of about 10 or 12 years, where some communities made every use in their entire zoning table a conditional use. They had no permitted uses. Everything they identified was a conditional use. And the idea was, "Well, we don't really have to say yes if we identify it that way." That's not accurate under the law. Your legislative decision-makers, your city council members, have already made a determination that a particular use is appropriate in the broader zone when they note it as a conditional use. They may not have intended to do that, but under the law, that's exactly what they've done. So, when you see a use that is noted as conditional, the law has made a determination that it is broadly appropriate in the zone. However, we may need to apply some conditions to that use to make it fit on the particular parcel of land we're talking about. This is the way our law looks at it. You may adopt a land use ordinance that includes conditional uses and provisions for conditional uses that require compliance with objective standards. That's something we're going to talk a lot about tonight, I would guess. Objective standards set forth in an applicable ordinance, a municipality may not impose a requirement or standard on a conditional use that conflicts with the provision of this chapter broadly, LUDMA, which is a lot of stuff, or other state or federal law. Your conditional use provisions have to be compliant with the Utah State Constitution, with the federal constitution. That's what that means in shorthand. Here, a land use authority shall approve a conditional use if reasonable conditions are proposed or can be imposed to mitigate the reasonably anticipated... This is so much language. ...the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed use in accordance with applicable standards. So, we're going to start to break this down and think about it a little bit. What does your conditional use ordinance look like in your city? And are you intimately familiar with it as a planning commissioner? I will suggest some things to you tonight that I hope don't impose some kind of drastic change on the way you view your job as a planning commissioner. I think it's important that you generally understand the zones in your city. I don't have an expectation of the planning commissioners I work with on a regular basis that they know every single restriction applicable to the zone. I don't expect them to understand that the height limit in an R110 zone is 35 feet and it's measured from natural grade, and that I don't expect necessarily that level of understanding. I do, however, expect them to have familiarity with what the conditional use ordinance of the city says, because you will work with it so often, in almost every municipality you will. When I say that, I mean your process for approving and what your standards are for the approval of a conditional use permit. The requirement described in 2A1 to reasonably mitigate anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed conditional use does not require elimination of the detrimental effects. That's a significant point of our law. So, when you see a conditional use come in and you think, "Oh, there's going to be light spillage, and they have to have lighting in their parking lot as a requirement of ordinance, and so, it's going to bother the neighbor, so we can say no." Not really true. It doesn't require elimination. It requires reasonable steps to mitigate. And it says substantially mitigate. That's helpful for you in your role, but it doesn't say eliminate. It says mitigate. If a land use authority proposes reasonable conditions on a proposed conditional use, the land use authority shall ensure that the conditions are stated on the record and reasonably relate to mitigating the anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed use. When you've been sitting on a planning commission for three or four years, and when a no-brainer conditional use application comes before you, and they come, I know they do. I know some are easy. Some are easy to say yes to. None of them are easy to say no to. That's my position as an attorney. Some of them are easy to say yes to. When they come before you and you know the planning commission all understands, and they're all going to vote yes, it's so easy to say, "I move that we approve the conditional use permit application for those." And you don't state the findings and the conditions, and you don't go through all of that. I hope you at least say, "As stated in the staff report that we got before the meeting." I hope your staff is giving you something like that, but the law requires that we say that. If you don't do that, you subject your city to the potential of appeals from a third party. And it would be a really kind of a difficult, not difficult, but kind of a messy appeal, because what happens is your attorney gets the record back and finds there's nothing stated in the motion. He has to try and bootstrap from a staff report somehow that those findings were made. He has to look at the transcript of the hearing and read through and pore through and start to pull out every detail. And then he has to hope that his judge is willing to go there with him instead of just looking at the motion that was made to approve something. Again, you don't want to hear me talk for this long, so if you have questions, please raise your hands. And if you have questions, probably somebody else has questions also. See, if the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of a proposed conditional use cannot be substantially mitigated by the proposal or the imposition of reasonable conditions, the land use authority may deny the conditional use. That's the one out you have in the statute. So, you have to be able to say that there are... First of all, you have to be able to reasonably anticipate these detrimental effects of the use. That's kind of easy for us, right? Over time, we've developed the ability to see those things. Our planning staffs are very good at pointing them out. We understand what that looks like. But if they cannot be substantially mitigated, there's obviously a little bit of a subjective role there, right? And it can be a little bit overwhelming. I will tell you, it is more objective than you think it is in application, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. A land use authority's decision to approve or deny a conditional use is an administrative land use decision. Do we all in this room understand the difference between a legislative land use decision and administrative land use decision? And how they are looked at by the courts and what your role is? Great. I'm not going to dive into that tonight, then, at least not in this context. This is interesting language I want you to read. This is from the Euclid case. And then we'll start talking about big-picture stuff with conditional use permits. "The question whether the power exists to forbid the erection of a building of a particular kind or for a particular use..." We talk about that all the time, right? "...like the question whether a particular thing is a nuisance is to be determined not by an abstract consideration of the building or the thing considered a part, but by considering it in connection with the circumstances and the locality. A nuisance may be merely a right thing in a wrong place, like a pig in the parlor instead of the barnyard." 1926 Supreme Court case law still really hits at the heart of conditional uses, right? It has already been determined that it is appropriate in the zone generally. The question is, is it appropriate at that particular location? The Supreme Court recognized that kind of an idea in '26. So, how do we review our conditional uses, then? "The process of reviewing a conditional use can be conducted by any designated land use authority, including staff." How many of you, as planning commissioners, are hearing conditional use applications? You've never heard a conditional use application in this room?
Absolutely.
All right. Do you hear them in Cedar Hills? You hear them in your city. Is there anybody in this room who believes that their conditional uses have been delegated to staff? Are there any kinds of conditional uses in your city that have been delegated to staff? They can be. They can be delegated to staff. There is nothing in the law that says a planning commission is the land use authority that has to handle conditional use permits. Are you ready to answer?
Yes, some are, like fences. It'd be really annoying to have to go to the planning commission to put up a fence.
Right. A number of communities do dimensional standard things. They delegate to staff for some reason. They do fence heights. That's normal. I've seen a lot of home occupations that get handled at a staff level that are conditional uses in a code. Those are things that can happen. We don't have any council mayor forums here, right? No. Review of a conditional use is an executive or administrative function, and a purely legislative body can't do it. So, if you were a separation-of-powers form of government, a council mayor forum, you could not, as a city council member, even look at a conditional use permit. So, here's one thing that should give you some comfort. We hear a lot about referendums on land use issues. It's been a big issue over the last 10 years, not so much over the last two or three, but it has been a big issue. Conditional use permits are not subject to referendum. Your decision on a conditional use permit is not subject to referendum. There's no requirement in the state land use act that notice of a pending conditional use be given to anyone other than the applicant. How many of you notice a radius of X hundred feet for conditional uses? I think every community does, right? We'll talk a little bit about what that is.
Is it a courtesy, then, if it's not required?
No, it probably is required in your ordinance. And under your ordinances, we call those notices that aren't required by state law, but we require at a local level courtesy notices from time to time. If you have it in your ordinance and you fail to observe it, your process is deficient. So, just kind of keep that in mind. Unless the application is considered by more than one person, there's no requirement for a public hearing or even a public meeting. So, think about that a little bit in the context of conditional uses.
What do you mean by that?
So, if you have a delegation to one person on your staff... The question was, what does it mean, that last bit? If you have a delegation in your ordinance to just one person on your staff to handle a conditional use permit, they don't have to hold a public meeting to do it. They don't have to schedule a public hearing to do it. They can do it in their office, 10:30 on a Thursday, nobody there but them, they can approve a conditional use permit. The law does not require a public meeting or a public hearing for a conditional use. You may do that, but the law doesn't require it. So, then we start to think about, okay, we're doing it, though, right? All of us are doing conditional uses as planning commissions, and we start to think about why. And then, if there's a why, how do we do it? So, I want to start by putting this in context. This is something I've been talking about a lot for the last five or six years. I think in our land use laws, our traditions and our practices are walking us into trouble spots that we don't have to go to necessarily. I think we can take two routes to avoid those trouble spots. One, we can do them on a streamlined way. Or, two, we can continue to involve the public, but with a better, I guess, better set of guidelines for how the public can participate in our process. So, let me tell you what I see in most land use laws all the time, and I've talked about this with subdivisions and site plans and everything else. We send out a notice to the neighbors that says, "The property at this address has filed an application to obtain a conditional use permit from the city to conduct X, to build a house, to run a grocery store, you know, whatever it may be." And we invite people within 300 feet, or 500 feet, or 1,000 feet, and say, "We'll hold a public hearing at this time, at this place. Interested persons are invited to attend and provide input on the proposal." That's what the traditional card says, and it's paraphrased, but that's kind of what it says. And then the people show up, and of course, their reaction is, "I don't like this proposal because..." And it's all the reasons why it affects them, right? "This is going to increase the traffic in my house, and it's going to take me 30 more seconds to leave my street out onto this big, major road." Or, "The traffic is going to be so heavy, my kids can't ride their bikes there." Or, "There's going to be noise, or there's going to be light." There's all those things, right? And with a lot of our administrative land use proposals, our answer in the law is, "Great, thank you, it doesn't matter." Doesn't matter. So, "Thank you for coming. We know we invited you, but what you said doesn't matter." And we kind of tell them in the meeting, right? They say what they want to say, and it's emotional to them, and it's impactful to them. And then somebody in the meeting at some point will say, "We've heard a lot of that. We've heard a lot of those comments." And candidly, they don't apply to this application. So, then the people get out in the hallway, and they look at you, and they say, "Why did you invite us?" So, we're creating these things in our land use processes.
What they say, Todd, is, "You guys had already decided this before you could have the meeting."
True. And for a lot of our administrative applications, that is more true than false. I will tell you, I think conditional uses are kind of an exception to that, but they're not as broad an exception as we would like it to be. I think our land use processes are in some ways designed for failure, and I think we ought to think about them more deeply. Conditional uses are a good place to start. I think, for whatever reason, public input on a conditional use permit has had more impact in my career, I've seen it have greater impact than in other administrative land use decisions. And in many cases, I will say, I think that impact has been positive and has impacted decisions in positive ways. But I think that's the exception rather than the rule for administrative standards. "Standards and conditions must be both reasonable and consistent with the standards, and the ordinance must not exceed the authority conferred upon the land use authority reviewing the application." This is the part that I think we miss sometimes. A lot of us have conditional use ordinances that say things like, "Must be consistent and harmonious with the other uses in the neighborhood. Can't be detrimental to the overall purposes of the zoning ordinance." We see a lot of those kind of standards, right? They still exist in a number of ordinances across the state.
Well, when I was a Salt Lake City, we actually had an ordinance... In the ordinance, it said you had to have approval from the neighboring property.
So, if I were to structure a good conditional use ordinance, and I hope you'd all go right out and look at my clients' ordinances, but if I were to structure a really good conditional use ordinance, it would mirror the state language in saying, you know, "It has to be approved unless there's no set of conditions that could be imposed to mitigate, substantially mitigate, the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of the use," right? I would start from that kind of standpoint. Then, I would have a set of standards that would say a conditional use must be A, B, C, D. And those standards have to be objective, right? And I would address the common things we hear: traffic, light spillage, noise, and hours of operation, buffering from conflicting uses. Question here?
How do you look at the term reasonable and define it?
How do you look at it? Because you're the one that matters. So, the question was, how do you look at the term reasonable and define it? There's this interesting intersection in land use law of administrative and legislative kind of stuff that I find so curious. Conditional uses are very, very, very clearly an administrative decision, and the law says we have to have objective standards. But the statute itself uses the term reasonable, right? So, it inserts this kind of subjective idea into the whole analysis. And what I have found with judges on conditional use cases is, they are willing to give you a fairly significant amount of latitude on the determination of reasonable. But if your record is not clear about your deliberation and kind of your decision on that, if your record is otherwise sketchy, their willingness to give you discretion on your determination of what is reasonable or not reasonable goes way down. And it's not a legal analysis that's not stated in the case law anywhere. I'm just giving you a practical review from what I have seen. Good records, good procedures, a clean transcript from a hearing, and somebody says, "Well, I think it's reasonable that our citizens can expect that in the enjoyment of their property, they won't have light pointing directly into the windows in their backyard." Easy, right? "I think they can expect that the traffic on the street won't go from a service level A to an F because of this use." Those kind of things are easy. If your record's great, everything's good. What happens is, when your record is poor, and somebody says something that means the same thing but isn't as reflected in such a clean record, the judge looks at that and says, "I don't really have evidence to support that assertion." And then the whole analysis gets jumbled, right? So, courts are willing to give you some latitude on your determination of what's reasonable as long as your process, your procedures, and your record are clear. That's just my gut feeling from having stood in front of judges on, I don't know, six or seven of these cases over the last eight or 10 years, more over my lifetime. That's kind of a universal thing. I think that's the way it looks as a general rule. But the law does not bound reasonableness in very many ways. But the point here of this slide, if your standards are not in your ordinance, you're going to fail in the review of a conditional use permit. If you don't have some kind of objective standard in your ordinance, and you are just applying a standard in your decision on your motion, you're going to fail on a challenge to your conditional use permit ordinance. You have to have those in the ordinance. Now, here's an aside. There's a whole lot of people who practice in my area, the law on the city side, that say, "Well, that's never been decided in a case." I kind of think it has. If you read out of three or four cases, they don't articulate that position very well. But when there weren't standards in an ordinance that were clearly stated and objective, the city's lost. The determinations may not have articulated that specific point, but the city's lost. There is an ombudsman opinion from this state that decides specifically on that issue. Once the standards are identified, the work of the assigned land use authority, planning commissions usually, which reviews an application for a conditional use, is to determine the detrimental impacts of the proposed use and apply conditions to reasonably mitigate them. This is the place where I think, from time to time, public input is helpful. Our planners are really, really good at their jobs. They do great work. As planning commissioners, you understand your role. Many of you are very, very experienced, and you've seen enough of these applications that you can see and anticipate what those things are. But sometimes, there is nothing like a neighbor to be able to see a proposal and say, "You know what this is going to do on my property?" And they can tell you something that you haven't thought about before. This is the one place in administrative land use law where I think public input can be really valuable. And when I have seen it be valuable, it's always in this kind of a circumstance where, because our planners may be familiar with an area generally, may know the property and been out and looked at it, but they don't have the experience of having lived there or having operated a farm next to what the proposed use is going to be. Something like that happens from time to time. So, I'm not an advocate of necessarily throwing out all the public process for conditional uses like I am for subdivisions. I think there's still a place, but I think we have to start educating our public about what their role is and what's significant. And then we have to have really good filters, because if we invite the public, my opinion is, no matter how well we educate them and no matter how well-intended they are, their comments are going to spill out of the appropriate bucket and into the "we can't really think about that" bucket. It's just inevitable, right? So, I think we need to have good filters as planning commissioners. It's essential we comply with the provisions of our own ordinance. If the ordinance states, for example, that conditional uses are only to be allowed to feed item in a long list is addressed and dealt with, and we don't do that in our motion, the discussion doesn't reflect it, there's nothing to show, you consider every item, your decision is suspect from a third party who may choose to appeal. Even if you grant the conditional use permit, a neighbor can appeal and make mischief with the whole process and make it difficult. So, any consideration of the nature and extent of detrimental impact is... So, any consideration of the nature and extent of detrimental impact is evaluated under a substantial evidence standard. How many of you understand what substantial evidence means? I work, I work in a group called the Land Use Task Force, and we meet every, it's pretty much year-round now, there's not really any time off, unfortunately. We meet usually twice monthly to talk about significant land use issues in the state. Three years ago, a group called the Property Rights Coalition, which is a group that essentially represents development interests in the state, said, "We need to statutorily codify the definition of substantial evidence." And I said, "It's codified. It's been there for a long time, and the cases have had a definition forever. We don't need to codify anything." And what we found out is, when we started to talk about it, everybody has a different idea of what the definition means. So, that quantum in quality of relevant evidence that is adequate to convince a reasonable mind to support a conclusion. Great, what does that mean? I tell my planning commissioners that when they hear something, is there enough to it that you can actually trust it and believe it? Right? So, and I'm, I don't, when I say these things, it sounds like I'm demeaning people from our public who give input at meetings. I promise you, I am not. I think it's valuable, and I, I am so impressed that people will show up at a council meeting and stand up at a mic and say things and subject themselves to ridicule or whatever, you know, whatever it is that might come. I think that's an awesome thing. But inevitably, somebody's going to stand up and say, "You are going to reduce the value of my property to nothing." You've heard that, right? "We're going to have, we're going to have a child killed because of this use." You have heard that. We hear, we hear these things, and we have a filter, right? We know that, in some cases, that really is hyperbole, and it's sort of irrational at some level with a lot of the things we're seeing proposed, not everything, but a lot of the things we're seeing proposed. I tell my planning commissioners, it's kind of a rational filter test for this. If you hear something and a neighbor says, "You're going to, you're going to reduce the value of my property to nothing." But then, three steps later, somebody stands up and says, "I have hired and retained an appraiser, and I paid for an appraisal based on this proposed use, and here is their opinion." And they give you a written appraisal that's been professionally performed, and they put it into the record. That's different than the neighbor who says, "You're going to reduce the value of my property to nothing," right? It's sourced from a credible place. There's some backup to it. Giving that consideration is different than giving the consideration to the neighbor who says, "You're going to destroy my property" with no basis or backing to it. Now, you may find, as you review the appraisal, that it's garbage. I've seen that also. But there's a different level to what they're presenting and what they're saying. So, that substantial evidence moves us from emotional sort of opinion without basis into, "We need something to back up what they're saying, and we need to be able to substantiate it in a reasonable and rational way." You've all heard of public clamor. What, what is public clamor in your minds? "The opposition of neighbors is not one of the considerations to be taken into account when determining whether to issue a development permit." Davis County versus Clearfield, were you there, Wolf?
I was at the planner.
Yeah. I'm not going to say when that case was decided, because that will age, Wolf. But this is our Supreme Court saying this. "The opposition of neighbors is not one of the considerations to be taken into account when determining whether to issue a development permit. The land use authority must rely on facts and not mere emotion or local opinion in making such a decision. A decision cannot be upheld if challenged when it is based on the vague reservations expressed by either the neighbors to the proposed use or members of the land use authority." So, all of this is what our court thinks is public clamor. And it's a good definition, actually. It's as good as I've seen in any case around the country. So how do we do it right? You guys aren't asking anything. You're just, you're just letting me talk.
Kind of asked on your
Okay.
Conditions. We've had a little bit of a heartburn on our planning commission as we have these come forth, because we're told that the conditional use, if we approve it, runs with the property state.
It does.
Why is that?
The law has determined that a land use decision on a condition, conditional use permit runs with the land.
I know that.
That is a, that is a determination of law, because if you look at the basis for the decision, it would be very, very difficult, in my mind, to separate that out and say, "It's based on the operator," as opposed to the conditions that I imposed on that particular use. It would be really difficult for me to find a case where the operator was so significant that my conditions would sort of revolve around that as opposed to the use of the land. And if they did revolve around the operator, they probably aren't revolving around the actual use of the land, and we're probably beyond the boundaries of the conditional use permit. I think that's the kind of thinking that underlies the decision, and this is not unique to Utah law, by the way. It is well-settled law across the country that conditional use permits run with the land. They only go away if they're abandoned. So...
Like, something might be binding at one period of time, but twenty years later, it might not be binding.
Right. And the way I would approach that, and the way I tell my clients to approach that, is we have to rely on traditional zoning mechanisms. So, you can issue a conditional use permit, it runs with the land, and it will be grandfathered against zoning changes. But when you change the law, that conditional use becomes a non-conforming legal use and has to be operated within the strict boundaries of the approvals that were given then, and it can't be enlarged, it can't be expanded, it can't be abandoned. And at some point, if it's so noxious that the city feels like, "We've got to get rid of it," you can amortize a legally non-conforming existing use, you just have to, at some point, pay for that over time as you take that out of business.
Can a conditional use permit, I think that's a mantra, can a conditional use permit ever be taken away?
Yes. You can revoke a conditional use permit for the failure to observe conditions. That is a difficult process, it has to be done with full due process of law, it should look like a mini-trial that proves that they have violated the conditions of the use and that the violation was significant enough that it can be withdrawn. There are a couple of cases in Utah that go over the revocation of conditional use permits and establish a pretty good set of standards for us. So I think our law's fairly, fairly good in giving direction, and I think it's pretty well-settled on that. That's a place where angels fear to tread, but people have succeeded. They've done it. So, I, I think when you analyze a conditional use, our frame of mind ought to be, first, we need to identify the potential detrimental effects, and we need to look at those against our ordinance, right? So, if it's a noise issue and we've got something in our ordinance that relates to the noise of the use, okay, great, now we can start to work with that and find out how we can mitigate that. And it's substantially mitigate, right? It's not if they can mitigate decibels one degree, decibels one degree, it's, it's substantial mitigation. That's on our side, right? That's in our favor. We have to put that substantial evidence in the record that the supposed detrimental effects are reasonably anticipated, not by public clamor or just, "Gosh, this kind of bothers me," but by that substantial evidence in reference to our standards. If we're going to argue that they cannot be substantially mitigated, it must be made with a discussion of why the circumstances of this use at this location would be different from the same use in other locations within the same zoning district whereby definition, it's been determined to be appropriate. So, tie those decisions to this specific piece of property, right? If at some point in your discussion, somebody says, "I don't know why our council ever said this should be a conditional use in this zone. This is not appropriate for this zone." You're going down the wrong path in your analysis of the conditional use. Even if that's what you think, keep that one in your hat and tie it to the property specifically as you think about that, right? This is the thing that's always tough. We live in a very property rights respectful state. That is just the truth of the matter. I have practiced in Washington, which is a heavily regulatory state, even with the east side of Washington being what it is. Western Washington has controlled things, and that is a land use state that is highly regulatory. We are not highly regulatory in this state by any stretch. And biases run in favor of land use approvals. And dial must be based on reasonable and logical interpretation of the standards in the ordinance. And if you find yourself hearing the neighbor's emotion and concern and agreeing with them, pull yourself back into your role and start thinking objectively about, "What does our ordinance say? How do I tie our ordinance into what I think the detrimental effects of the use are? And then what are the possible mitigations to cover it?" There may be circumstances where you cannot find a way to mitigate detrimental effects. There was a case in Springdale from five years ago now, Wolf? Somebody was proposing a parking lot for entrance into Zion, but it was right next to a residential neighborhood, and it would have been right on the edge of this neighborhood where the houses were in pretty close proximity. And Springdale made a really good case that, "Look, there's nothing we can do about the noise from this parking lot." And, you know, you can shield the light, and you can do all of that, but the parking lot is so close to these houses that, no matter how we shroud the light, it's going to be affecting these homes. They made a really good case in their analysis, and they denied the conditional use permit. The court upheld their, their decision. It was on a two to three vote by the three judge panel of the Court of Appeals. But their decision was upheld because they had substantial evidence in the record that showed they could not substantially mitigate those detrimental effects. Very good decision for municipalities. It's got the development community pulling their hair out because they think the court missed on the decision. What I think actually happened is, the city made a really good case. They developed a really, really good record, and they did their job well. So, that's what I have tonight. I would love to answer questions you have.
Do you advocate in all the tools of doing away with conditional uses?
The question is, do I advocate doing away with conditional uses? I advocate doing away with them in certain circumstances. I don't like them in most commercial zones. And I'm talking about heavily commercial zones. In a light commercial or neighborhood commercial, I think they have their place. In primarily residential neighborhoods, I do think they have a place for certain kinds of uses. I don't advocate getting rid of them. I, I think they are difficult and thorny, but they have a place in land use law that I think is significant. So I don't, I don't talk about getting rid of them altogether with my clients. Now, if somebody wants to, I know how to write the ordinance, but it's not what I advocate. Yes?
You talk about abandoning the conditional use. Is there a time period, like, you've got a building, the tenant is there, and they get the conditional use, and then the next tenant uses it for something else, and somebody else wants to come and use it again? What kind of abandonment process is?
So, abandonment has lots of angles to it, and I'll try to, the question was, what is abandonment? Is there a presumptive period? Is a change in use matter in that analysis? That's the general question. And ordinances can establish the abandonment period, and there's nothing in state law that says what it has to be. In fact, I don't think our state law even addresses abandonment.
It does appear, but not law.
But it doesn't have a presumptive period, right?
I don't think so.
I don't think it does. And I've seen abandonment periods of six months and one year. I saw one in an old ordinance once that was three years, where, you know, there had to be nothing on the property for three years before you could consider it abandoned. Six months and one year are both really common provisions that I see. Both of them, I think, are, okay, six months is on the short end. But in a, in sort of analyzing abandonment, if somebody comes in and establishes a different use on that property and actually operates it, the conditional use, in my opinion, is gone. That's, it's over. That has been abandoned by the property owner, applying the property to a different use. That conditional use permit can't then be reinvigorated by something else unless you're a gravel pit. I didn't say that out loud, but that's kind of, unfortunately, that's kind of the law in this state right now, which, oh, we need to fix that. But, but yeah, that's, that's what I see with abandonment. I, I tend to look at six-month time periods with a little skepticism, just because it's sometimes hard to transition from one use to another. You know, even, even if a guy's leaving a restaurant space and somebody else is coming in, that six-month period can start to feel kind of tight sometimes. That makes me nervous, but I've never seen a case that overturned a six-month period.
Now, I'm a little confused, because men ago, you said, "Did it always go with the property?" And now you're saying if it was abandoned...
But it's...
It's not like...
Yeah. And abandonment is always an accept, you, you can have an ordinance that terminates the conditional use by abandonment. Absolutely. And, and let me say this. If you, if you have a conditional use that allows the operation of a music store or something on a piece of property, and you have an operator who runs a music store there, and they go out of business, and the property sits for two or three years, and you, you still have that conditional use in your ordinance, and somebody new comes in and says, "I want a conditional use to operate a music store there," you issue a new conditional use permit because the old one was abandoned, but it will be so hard for you to say no. Right? Because you've approved a use, you haven't changed your ordinance. So, they run with the land unless they are abandoned or unless you buy them out.
So, unless they take care of it, or in a residential area?
Yep.
So, the person moves out, somebody else moves in, four years later, they move out, somebody else says, "Oh, I want to do a daycare."
And if your ordinance...
Reapply it?
Yes, they would have to reapply, in my opinion, in that case. If your ordinance still permits it, you will have a hard time saying no to the new application also.
Unless, unless you develop history or substantial evidence of how that previously impacted the neighborhood.
Yep.
Then you can come up and articulate that.
Yeah. There was, there was a handover here, I think.
I was just curious about your comment about gravel pits. Does that apply to all extraction industries or just specifically gravel and sand?
It, it doesn't necessarily apply to all extraction operations, but most that we would call traditional sand and gravel, it's going to reach. So batch plants...
Ready mix that kind of thing.
Yeah. And, and there was, I was a little facetious when I said it. The courts just tend to look at, and our law now protects those uses in a way that is different than any other. So...
Well, if you inherited your grandpa's gravel pit, now all of a sudden, you need to start digging again, if you're right.
A mile and a half away, but somehow close to the, that's facetious, that's facetious too. I have a sore spot about gravel pits, you might be able to see that.
Todd, it does say in the state code that the legislative body may provide for termination of all non-conforming uses, except billboards, by providing a formula...
We're getting to all the stuff I hate.
...establish a reasonable time period...
Yeah.
...in which an owner can recover, and then by determining, or establishing what the termination of a non-conforming is due to its abandonment.
Yeah.
So what it really says is, you need to define in your ordinance what you mean by abandon.
So you need, you need a time period in there. And if you're going to try the amortization of a non-conforming use route with the conditional use, you need to sort of establish and go through analysis that says, "The economic value of it is this." You need to put a reasonable capitalization period on it, determine what that is, and then say, "In this many years, the use is no longer valid," right? So you give them time to recover an investment. That's a hard process, and you are bucking for a big fight when you go that route. I've been involved in lots of discussions about amortizing billboards.
They've got a whole
So...
Law unto themselves.
Yeah. You just hit on my two sore points. So if you want to give me...
Yasko did with the legislation?
It wasn't Yasko, it was Reagan.
Yeah.
I don't mind saying.
That's right.
So, you hit my two sore points. Those are the only things that really wind me up about land use law. Otherwise, I'm so docile, and I'm so nice. Are there any other questions? Thank you, you're lovely, you're not very interactive, but you're really great. I, I, I really do have a soft spot for planning commissioners, I appreciate so much what you do. You, I mean, I don't know why anybody would pay money to get elected, and you have to campaign, and it's so hard. But what you do is kind of thankless. I, it's not very often at your meetings that a citizen shows up and stands up to your addressable folks and says, "You guys are so great, and I'm so grateful for you, and I'm so thankful for all you do, and your judgment and your wisdom is exceeding." We, we just don't, you don't get that very often, and...
There are people out there who think that, they just never come to the meeting.
Right. They're so happy they don't show up. But I really am, I really, I really think what you do is a wonderful thing, and it's a huge part of your communities. You know, when I talk to your electives, I always talk about why we form cities. There's nothing in the federal constitution or the state, or the, you know, any law of... There's nothing in the federal constitution or the state or the, you know, any law of, of the United States that says that we have to provide for the organization, organization of cities. There's nothing that says people have to live in a city. Our state constitution says that the legislature is to provide for the incorporation and organization of cities, but nobody has to organize as a city. You don't have to do that. We do that for very particular reasons, right? Communities get together and people band together, neighbors band together and organize themselves into a city and there's a lot of reasons they do it. A lot of times it has to do with the use of land. Sometimes it's to kind of preserve and protect a community character from what you think is encroachment from another neighborhood or something. I mean, we joke a lot that Hooper should have been named not Roy, but, but, but the truth is, we organize for all kinds of different reasons and they're all significant. And the most significant one to me is the protection of kind of a community sense, right? A feeling of what you think your community ought to be. And some of that is land use, but a lot of it is other stuff. The land use part of it is so significant. And I tell the electeds all the time that I don't think the most important thing they do is pass laws. I think the most important thing they do is create a sense of community and that's where you are at the front line. That's where you're the face of your community for so many citizens who will never go on a council meeting, but there's a proposal in the neighborhood, so they're going to show up and they see you first. So I really think what you do is significant and important. I'm impressed by the dedication people have in this state to that job and thank you.
Thank you very much, Todd. As always, your expertise and, and education is just high quality and always entertaining and right on. You know, I, I found in my years as, as a planning professional and the work that, that I had the opportunity to do with planning commissions, the very first things to, to teach them and to help them understand was the difference between the shoulds and the shalls, right? The mayes and the musts. And a presentation like Todd's, I think, really lays that foundation extremely, extremely well and then allows you to go from those very basic items like that to then dig into the things that are more detail oriented or even then trying to determine the definition of reasonable, right? Which seems to change every time there's an election cycle, but that's just is what it is. So I guess in, unless you're talking about a billboard that, that is for a gravel pit, then, then we should be good. But if, if any of you have billboards advertising gravel pits and you need any type of expertise on that, please reach out to Todd because he's definitely going to be the one. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. So next up, we're going to bring up Wolf here and Wolf, I'm going to jump over here and pull up your presentation real quick and you get started.
While he's doing that, it's, I mean, it's all right. Twenty-seven years I was at Davis County, fourteen of that is the director. Then I went over to Salt Lake City and was at Salt Lake City as their planning director for six years and then Salt Lake County as their director of regional planning and transportation. And in my time at Salt Lake City, two of the biggest issues that we dealt with while I was there and we had some really bloody fights over were billboards and gravel pits. Really was. And, and they're big issues everywhere around the state for those, if you don't have any of them, consider yourself lucky. If you do, you're probably going to have a fight at some time over, over them, so it's always fun. Well, you're going to see a difference in our two presentations. I'm going to talk to you about public meetings and Rob's going to jump in a little bit and help out with some of this too. And we'll talk about what meetings are, what they are meant to accomplish. Todd's already touched on some of this stuff and we'll kind of maybe amplify a little bit on some of the things that he said, but you're going to see real quickly the difference between us. Todd, as you may know, and he was introduced to us, he's an attorney and you saw his slides were lots of words. I'm a planner who deals with people that are coming in all the time and so you're going to see my presentation has lots of pictures. And for those of you who prefer pictures over words, this might be a good one. Oh, thanks. So let's talk about public meetings and talk a little bit about how and what they are meant for. All right. You guys all, now you're all on planning commissions? Todd asked you right at the beginning. Everybody's been in at least one meeting so far, right? Nobody here who hasn't been to a meeting yet, being a planning commissioner or maybe you've been to a council meeting. Aren't they wonderful? Don't you just love meetings? They're just so great and especially because they're held in the evening and sometimes they go really late and just makes life so much more fun and pleasant. You know, you get those things, you get controversial items, you get the people lined up to cuss at you and say whatever they want to say and, you know, maybe get mad at you. You get yelled at by both sides, right? Don't you just love that member of your planning commission who plays to the crowd? You're just sitting there going, oh, come on, really? You know, it's, it just makes life so much fun. What's not to love about these meetings? Great stuff, right? I've had people who have been on planning commissions and even elected officials that sometimes come and they say to me, hey, whiz, these meetings would go so much better if we wouldn't have to deal with all these bothersome people that show up. I work at a company, we have board meetings where we have to make decisions, you know, kind of like what a planning commission does and what a council does, but we just meet, just us, you know, our board or our group, our, our team. And nobody's there to bother us and we make decisions. Can't we just do that? Because we're kind of doing similar things, running the city, we're trying to make decisions for the city and how it works and what ought to be, be happening. I tell those folks unfortunately, no, it doesn't work that way. You are a planning commission of a city or a county, maybe on the council, some of you may be, but you are part of government. Craig Call always likes to say, when people come into your meeting, you're the government. You're the thing they see and as Todd says, you're sometimes the first thing they see that relates to government. And so our meetings have a different role, a little bit of a different role than you would say like in a company or, or with other types of organizations. How they're conducted, what people are allowed to do, the kinds of decisions that you make and how you make those decisions. That's all a little bit different and in some cases a lot different because it's public, it's government. You're part of that organization, you're part of that structure and so you really have to be involved in that and understand that and, and work within that framework. So let's talk about what that is. All be, according to Utah State Code, it says, all meetings of public bodies must be open to the public. Planning commissions are public bodies. City councils obviously are public bodies. There are other organizations or so on that are also defined as public bodies, but public bodies, which you are as a planning commissioner, to comply with the Utah Public and Open Meetings Act, you must be open to the public. There are some exceptions for when you can have a closed meeting, but they're rather rare. In fact, I, for a planning commission, I can only think of maybe, I count them on one hand in my thirty-nine years as being a planner, I can probably only count maybe on, on one hand, the number of times a planning commission meeting was closed. There just isn't a justification or a purpose to do that most times. Otherwise, your meeting is required to be open, the public is allowed to come to your meeting and see what you do. And that's what we need to talk about a little bit here. The public has the right to attend your meetings, to see and hear the public's business, which is what you're conducting. Because you're following rules and ordinances that were put in place by the council and it's on behalf of the community and the residents of the community and so that's public business and they have a right to come in here and see what you're doing. They have the right to attend, but they do not have the right to speak. Now, whenever I throw this slide up, I always get sometimes within the group funny looks like, what? People, they don't have the right to speak at any public meeting? That's what government's all about, isn't it? Is that people can come and address the group and say whatever they want to say because they should be allowed to do that. That's what our system of government is, is that people should be able to come and say whatever they want. But that's not the case under our codes and ordinances and the way we function. So what is, I mean, what's the purpose or how does this all function? What you're thinking about and what we need to understand is the difference between a public meeting and a public hearing. They're actually two very different things. People are thinking about a public hearing when they think that people can come and have a right to speak. Certain kinds of meetings and certain things that you do in meetings may require a public hearing. And let's look at maybe what some of those different purposes are. A public hearing, it really is what it says. Everybody who wants to come and wants to say something about what that particular issue is that you're holding a hearing for has the right to address you and say what it is that they want to say about it. You must really allow anyone who wants to speak to speak. This is all covered in the state code and it requires public hearings for certain kinds of actions. Not for everything that you do, but really only for certain kinds of actions. Here's an agenda, an example of an agenda. And I highlighted in red, you can see they have a number of different items on their agenda. And then it says in red here, it says, public hearing for this item and a public hearing for this item. These other items don't require public hearings, but these do. And when they're required, then the public is allowed to comment on those things. People have the right to speak at a public hearing, but they don't have unfettered rights. They can't just come in and basically say whatever they want, however they want, for as long as they want. You can actually establish rules about how your public hearings operate. You can establish things like, you know, and this is particularly for if you're having a public hearing and there's going to be a lot of people there. You can do things like requiring or establishing signup sheets so people will sign up that they want to say something. You can determine the order of the speakers. A common one that I see in meetings is they'll say, all right, let's do it this way, let's have someone for and someone against and we'll alternate them. You know, that's a, that's a common way of kind of structuring the order of the meetings. What do you think? Can you put time limits on what people say? You're all nodding your heads? You can. And especially in big public hearings, that may be really important because otherwise you'll be there, there till five in the morning if you just let it go. But be careful with your time limits. Be fair about it. Make sure that people really do have the time to say what they need to say. Don't overly restrict them, but yes, you can put time limits on the amount of time that people can spend speaking in order to get through your business. Question?
So other than like, please state your name and address and speak for three minutes and then or they're going to speak this form already for forty minutes.
Sure.
We can do that. Each of you speak for three minutes so we can still get through all the other things on our agenda.
Sure.
We can.
Yeah, you can. The thing that you want to make sure that you do though, that you accomplish is that you've given everybody who wants to speak a reasonable opportunity to say what they want to say and that you're not overly restricting them or, you know, they really had a point they wanted to make and they didn't get to make it, you know? You might help them along saying, you know, hey, get to your point, please, because you're running out of time and we need, have a bunch of other people that we need to hear from. You can do things like that, but you can do that. Question?
I was just going to ask all of that same lines. Is, do you need to set those rules up and it be written or can you set them up, oh, there's a lot of people here today, we're going to move it to one minute and whatever?
Sure, you can certainly do that. You can do that at the meeting, but I really would encourage you to think about and establish some rules in advance. Just to say, you know, I mean, frankly, unless you're a big city and you have a lot of issues and a lot of people that show up to most of your meetings, like I kind of had at Salt Lake City when I was there. In most of the smaller communities, when you have a public hearing, you know, you get maybe a handful of people that show up to speak and they're going to talk for a couple of minutes and they're done. So in that regard, it's almost kind of like you don't really need to set any rules. But when you get that big meeting and the room's packed and everybody wants to say something, then it's good to have the rules. And so what you might, might do is just say, all right, and as a body, you know, take some time and say, if we have a big meeting, here's what we want to do. We want to have rules like this. Print them, have them available on your website and in, you know, paper copies. And then when you get to that big meeting, you can say, yeah, tonight we need to follow these rules that we have talked about for how we conduct this public meeting. So I really would encourage you that if you're going to do rules, do them in advance and have them ready. A lot of times you're probably not going to need them, but when you do need them, then you've got them and they're there in advance.
I've certainly seen that as best practice and then planning commissioners are already very comfortable with the implementation of those rules when they need to. You know, but the wording I've seen utilized before is, is that the, the planning commission may allow up to three minutes per comment.
Yeah.
And then that, that, that allows them the latitude to either, you know, be up to that or sometimes even go beyond that depending on what the meeting is.
Yeah.
Well.
Yes.
In the rules I write for my planning commissions, we always include a provision that says, at the discretion of the chair, comments may be limited to a reasonable amount of time.
There you go.
When needed. That's all our rules say.
Back to reasonable?
Yep. And in some cases reasonable, it's been two minutes, in some cases it's been three.
Sure.
But then if you have a small item, you don't have to prove, you know, push those limits on somebody. But have a visible shot clock. I love those.
Yeah, those, those timer clocks. The countdown, the doomsday clock.
They're really valuable. I mean, it, it helps people get to a point quickly.
Yeah. Any other questions on that? All right, a public meeting, as I mentioned already, the public does not have a right to speak in a public meeting. Does that mean they can't speak? What do y'all think?
No.
No, it doesn't mean that at all. You can allow the public to speak in a public meeting. They just don't have a right to speak. Really what it is at that point, it's under, it's at the control of the chair. And this is where, you know, being the chair of a planning commission, there's a bunch of things that, and in fact, over time, I've kind of heard comments made and I'm working on a presentation right now about how to be a chair. But this is one of those things that the chair can determine whether they're going to allow members of the public to speak in a meeting. And you see it all the time. You know, you're, you're dealing with an issue and there's some people there and they want to hear what's going on, but it's not a public hearing and they want to say something about it. And, you know, I've seen instances where the, the planning commission and the chair has said, no, we're not taking any public comments, you can't say anything. But I've also seen many instances where the planning commission chair and the planning commissioners agree and they say, sure, you know, that's fine. Let's hear what you have to say. Take a minute or two and tell us what you're thinking. That's fine. Just make sure you're even handed about it. That, you know, if there are people there on, on both sides of the issue, don't just let people from one side of the issue speak, let people on both sides of the issue say something. Be reasonable, don't get into an open debate with people, you know, don't, don't, what, what happens a lot of times is that somebody comes up and they say something and one of the planning commissioners takes issue with that and they start debating back and forth with each other, right? Cut that off. That really shouldn't happen, you know, just say, hey, no, look, we're glad to hear what you had to say, we'll talk about it as a planning commission. But, you know, thank you for your input. So it's really kind of discretionary and it's really at the control of the chair. Question?
Yeah, I was going to point that out. People who aren't familiar with these meetings, they'll show up and think they can just walk up and have a dialogue with, with the board and this happened in our last council meeting and our mayor said, you just say your, your, have your peace and we, we won't entertain a dialogue with the board.
Yeah.
It may be necessary to put that.
And sometimes, and sometimes it's good to talk, you know, beforehand or when you have some time sometime with your planning commission and just say, look, when we, when we have people come and speak, don't get into a debate with people because sometimes it's the planning commissioners who start it. You know, they take issue with what the person said and they start firing at the person and then it gets into a debate. Todd?
I, I appreciate what Wolf says, I agree with all of it except, as an attorney, I have a real problem when my planning commissioner, my council is having a public meeting that's not a public hearing and they allow people to comment on an application when it's not a public hearing. I think that creates some legal jeopardy for the city in many cases and it makes me really uncomfortable. So I'm very careful with the chair. the chair of the meeting when they, when they say they're gonna do that. I have never stopped a chair and said, "Mr. Chair or Ms. Chair, you can't do that and that's inappropriate. I won't do that. I won't," especially not in a public meeting. But I've had discussions with planning commission chairs, with mayor, with Mayor Protems to say, "Please avoid that at all costs if you can." I, I think that creates legal jeopardy. So I think that ought to be the presumptive rule. Now, you're local government. You're not the state. You're not the federal government. The rules are and should be different for you. And if you're in a meeting some night and it's eight thirty and you have a simple application on the agenda and somebody shows up and they have something to say and you know that your planning commission is solid of the decision they're gonna make and whatever it is you hear is not gonna change the course of what you're doing, permitting that public comment in a short way is not fatal, right? But if it's a highly controversial item.
Yeah.
And for instance, you've already had a public hearing that's been closed and you're here the next week to make a decision or something like that has happened, please be very cautious about taking that public comment when it's not a public hearing.
Yeah.
Can I ask something?
Yes.
And on that note, especially when it's a problem that you've inherited that plan, commissioner, from something the city has done previously, was not consistent with their general plan and different things.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, if we leave it open to them, but that's sometimes where we hear about it and then we dig into it and find out about it. And then we have this problem and...
I've coached my mayors and my planning commission chairs to say, "I'm sorry, we're not taking comment on this. If you have something that's a burning issue for you, please feel free to send an email."
Yeah.
And direct it to a planning director or a staff member or somebody. Send that email. That, A, it doesn't leave them feeling like they're not gonna hear me no matter what. Here's an avenue. Sometimes the decision's gonna be made before they get the email. Okay, I understand, maybe it's not as impactful. But I still think from a legal standpoint, that's a far better situation than dividing a comment when it's not structured. What you're gonna have is at some point, you're gonna have comment like that. A decision's gonna be made with counter to a land use applicant. And they're gonna say, "The city accepted comment on a land use application when there was no public hearing and it prejudiced my application." I don't have a great way to defend that under the law. So just, you know, a little bit of sort of good thinking helps in those circumstances.
Yeah, and that's, and you know, and it really is important how the chair deals with that. And the chair kinda controls that, so like I say, we really kinda need to do a little bit of that training. So there's, you know, just that issue of the difference between a public hearing and a public meeting. Most, most people, most of the public, they don't know the difference. They don't know there is a difference. Even some of our own planning commissioners don't know the difference, that there's a difference between a public meeting and a public hearing. So it's, we need to help the public understand. We, you know, in a good way, in a kind way, in whatever way, we need to help the people understand. You know, we're gonna have a hearing on this matter and you can have your say. Or this item does not require a hearing and we're not gonna take any comments. And, you know, and, and just help people to understand that. Question in the back? Did you have a question?
Oh, I just wanted to say that some people online can't feel what Todd is saying. But it sounds really important, so I was wondering if maybe Will, you could restate what you said so that
Oh.
People who are watching recordings can kind of feel what he said there.
Okay, yeah. Todd was just, just to summarize it real quick, what Todd was saying was he really kind of encourages his, the cities that he works with, the planning commissioners, that they, that they not engage much in conversation with the public or allow public speaking because particularly if it's a controversial issue, if you've allowed some speaking and the decision goes against, there's a basis. You know, somebody can say, "Hey, this wasn't a public hearing and yet they allowed the public to speak and then they made a decision against me and he doesn't have a good way to defend that." So be cautious and be careful with how you, how you allow the public to speak and whether you even allow them to speak. Even, you know, even if it's discretionary. Now, I have seen plenty of meetings where it's, you know, there's not a lot going on, there's a couple of people in the audience and you're dealing with something and somebody in the audience says, "Hey, you know, yeah, I, you know, I got an idea on this." And, you know, a lot of times the people, some of the people on the planning commission know the person in the audience and they kinda go, "Oh, sure, Fred, let's hear what you have to say," you know. Most of the time that works out fine. But be careful. Just be careful. So that you're not prejudicing maybe what happens inappropriately. Yeah.
In a situation like that, we always have the exception at the beginning for public comment. If someone's gonna have to make public comment,
Yeah.
how does that affect, how does that affect other people?
Go ahead, Todd. You need a mic? Yeah, come on up here.
Come on, I'm sorry, Will. I'm really sorry.
No, that's fine. That's good.
I'm pretty strict with my planning commissions that they shouldn't be holding public comment periods before a planning commission meeting. Public comment is directed towards elected officials. It's almost always focused on policy matters. It's very rarely sort of administratively related, and if it is administratively related, there should be a process within the administrative land use process for it to happen. So I am not a fan of public comment periods just open mic night at planning commission meetings. I think they are far more dangerous than they are helpful. So that's, that's one attorney's view of that.
Yeah. And I know, I know of a number that do that. And sometimes, you know, and then there's a question too of whether do you hold it before the meeting? At the beginning of the meeting or at the end of the meeting? And kinda...
Is all of it recorded before the meeting?
Yeah.
Is it all recorded?
Well, at the first of the meeting, not before.
Oh, yeah, at the beginning of the meeting, right. Right, yeah. Question back there.
Even in the city council meeting where a public comment is allowed, it has to be on items not on the agenda.
That, that's easy to say sometimes. But, and I'll tell you again, in my time in Salt Lake City, that they, like I say, I mean, it's a big city, it's, it's an interesting city, it's kinda different. But they would have a public comment period at the city council meeting at the beginning of the meeting. And then they would have items on their agenda, you know, later on. Some of those items were not public hearings. But people wanted to have a say, so they showed up at the public comment period and had their say during the public comment period. And then it was really a question of, "Oh, boy, did we get a balanced view of what was going on here?" And it's really kind of an interesting issue, a bit of a sticky wicket, so think about that. Yeah.
Any council on, um, holding a public hearing before or after the staff makes their presentation on a, on a particular issue?
Yeah, I, I have a pretty good...
So Will, could you restate the question?
Oh. Uh, the question was whether the public hearing ought to be before or after the staff presents their information. And I've got a pretty good order of business that I've used over the years or seen used and then kinda pretty much adopted for myself. With the order of business generally being on an item when you've got it. The item is stated, you know, this is, we're considering this item now. Staff goes first. Staff presents the, what the item is and the information on it. Then the planning commission asks staff questions. Then if there's to be a hearing on it, then they open the public hearing. Oh, excuse me. The staff presents, the planning commission asks questions. Then they generally allow the applicant to come up and say whatever the applicant wants to say. Then they do the public hearing. At the close of the public hearing, a lot of times then the planning commission will allow the applicant to come and respond to some of the things that were said in the public hearing and also perhaps from staff with regard to some of the things. Then the planning commission has their discussion. And then they make a decision. That's kind of a order that I think has worked pretty well. You guys?
Yeah, no, that's, that's similar to what I've used and found most effective. I'd be interested in all that you're doing.
Staff presentations, where they educate.
Yep, right.
So what was the concern? The concern was having the public comment before the staff educated or what was?
Yeah, I think so. I think that's the question. As to whether, you know, the public comment ought to be before the staff then presents. We probably won't get into it tonight because of time, but I've got another whole presentation that's called Group Decisions and Group Decision Making. And especially for small groups like a planning commission. And there are a number of studies out there that show that decisions of a group more often than not, go the direction of what the first speaker in a group says. And I've always couched that in terms of saying to people, "So make sure you're the first speaker if you wanna get the decision to go your way."
Was the concern that we might fall into decision made as a public clamor? Is that what you were concerned about?
I don't know that I necessarily have any legal concern with you doing it either way. But I love the staff educating the public about the nature of an application before the public hearing.
A lot of times answer questions.
I think that helps focus the comment. And particularly if you have your staff educated in a way that they stand up and say, "This is an administrative decision of the planning commission. That means that if they meet the conditions of the ordinance with our application, we're obligated to approve the land use applica..." I mean, those kinda things are really helpful in a hearing context. If it's a conditional use permit, you can set the stage for what you want the comment to say. I think that's really helpful. In addition to just orienting to the property and all the issues, so.
Was there another question?
So occasionally we'll have something that we're required to have an area on.
Yeah.
And no one shows.
Sure.
So we'll, we'll, you know, run through that really fast at the beginning and then, you know,
Then move on.
Go through the presentations and the discussion and all of it. They're just so, we're complying. Is, is that still okay? Are we still complying?
Yeah. Yes, you have your set period of time, you've noted, made the notification that there's gonna be a public hearing. If nobody shows up, that was it.
Really good and all of that, so.
Now, a lot of times you'll get letters or emails or stuff, right? And in those cases, when you have your public hearing time, you just, you acknowledge, you say, "We have received letters. We've received emails." And maybe just kinda quickly summarize what some of those letters or emails have said so that it gets into that mix of what the public comment is. And certainly make it part of the record that that's what you've received. Okay. Let's talk a little bit about, and Todd's already talked about some of this, but when is a public hearing required? Bingo. That there really are two different kinds of purposes that you as a, and I'm gonna address this on the basis of a planning commission. You as a planning commission, there are really two different kinds of actions that you are responsible for, that you deal with generally. So the first one is legislative action. All right? This is when, you know, it relates to adoption of policy or rules to implement policies. It's, these decisions are more political than they are legal. Right? Is this a good idea? Is this not a good idea? You know, that's really the important part of it or what gets discussed a lot. The preferences of the members are given broad deference by the courts. Courts rarely overturn a legislative decision. Because they say, you know, "That's fair game. That's a policy. What does the city prefer to do in that case?" And unless they're clearly crossing some, you know, really set legal standard there like anti-discrimination or something like that, the, the courts are gonna say, "If the city wants to be stupid, they can be stupid." You know, if they wanted to act that way, they can do that. That's within their purview. The courts will only probably deal on these kinds of things if there was a procedural problem with how they went about making that legislative decision. Whether they followed their rules. These are usually challengeable in the courts only if there is no benefit or, as I said, it clearly violates some law or something that is clearly out of bounds that's been established. And these kinds of actions are what we call referable. Todd mentioned this, referenda. If citizens don't like the decision that is made, a legislative decision, this, under our state constitution and state law, citizens can go out, collect signatures and get it put on the ballot for a vote. Okay? What kind of actions are legislative actions that the planning commission deals with? Generally, these are things like adoption or amendment of your general plan. The adoption or the amendment of your land use ordinances. Zonings or rezonings of property. Annexations. And adoption of fee schedules or design standards or other things like that. Those are all considered legislative actions. You go through this process. And then, then they are adopted and become the policy or actually the rules for your city to follow. Legislative actions require a public hearing. Before you can take action, before the planning commission can take action on a legislative item, and, and I need to make this clear. You're not taking the final action on legislative items. The council is the body that takes the final action on a legislative item. Under state code, the planning commission though, must make a recommendation. The council can't act on these land use issues that are legislative without first receiving a recommendation from the planning commission. And before the planning commission can make that recommendation, they must hold a public hearing. All right? So your general plan, your zoning codes, your rezonings of property, all of those things that we listed there, before you can make your recommendation and those recommendations go on to the council for a final decision, you must have a public hearing. Now, the interesting thing is, is that the state code does not require that the council have a public hearing on these things. I've always found that curious as to why the state code doesn't require that, but it doesn't. But most councils do. In fact, I'm hard pressed to think of any council that doesn't hold a public hearing on these. And they're required in their own local ordinance, which you can do. You're not prohibited from having a public hearing. You're just not required to. But most jurisdictions have adopted in their codes or ordinances that they have a public hearing both at the planning commission, which is required by state code, and at the council, which is not required by state code, but they have them anyway. Question?
Does a statement of intent to do a referendum on an, on a, on a legislative issue, does that stop progress? Like, for example, we legislate a new type of zoning and we, we said, "Yeah, it's good." Somebody wants to referend. Is, is there a period of time where they say, "No, we intend to do a referendum, take them to the voters." And then we have to stop all progress on that project, wait for the outcome?
I don't think, Todd, that's a legal question. And I, I don't think it does.
I think the application, a, a conforming application does, so.
A conforming application for a referendum?
I don't think they have to have the signatures anymore. I think the conforming application.
So if they meet all of the requirements to, to say, "We're gonna do a referendum," then it does stop the action? Okay. I'm just thinking of a case up in Morgan County where, but, but they determined, or at least the county determined in that case, that they didn't have a legally valid referendum petition, right? And so they went forward with the project. But now that's being challenged in the courts and everybody may get really burned on that one. Who knows, however the court decision goes, but, okay. So the, the answer is, yeah, it looks like it does stop it. I know that I have, you know, I've heard plenty of, of comments from the development side of our world where the developers don't wanna see referenda because it stops what they're trying to do. And under, under the state rules, in a referenda, it has to be done at a regularly scheduled election. And that can sometimes be, depending on when the decision's made, the next election may be nine months, ten months, eleven months away. And that means nothing happens for that time period until you get to the election. And so that can be a long time for, for a developer or an applicant to wait to get a decision. So, interesting stuff. All right, let's see. All right, let's talk about administrative actions. This is the other kind of an action that the planning commission may take. When a planning commission is involved in an administrative action, you're no longer a planning commission. I mean, you are, but you're, under state code, you're technically legally called a land use authority. Land use authorities are the ones that make administrative decisions under our, our state code for land use. And so when a planning commission makes an administrative decision, they're a land use authority. Land use authorities are to be designated. They can be different for different kinds of administrative items. In other words, the planning commission can decide these things. A building official can decide these things. In some cases, we even have cities where they're saying, "The council's gonna decide these things." That's legal. It's allowed under the law. We don't encourage it because honestly, council members are not very good at doing administrative stuff. They're really good at the legislative stuff. But they're not very good at the administrative stuff because they often act like legislative. And, and we'll talk a little bit about what the difference is, and there's a fair amount of difference, but administratives, these are items that are being considered under the rules that have already been established now by your ordinance. You went through the legislative process. You established what your rules are gonna be, your zoning code, your subdivision ordinance. And now somebody's coming in and applying under those rules that you've established. And that's what an administrative item or action, administrative action is. These decisions are more legal and technical, not political. All right? Does it conform to the requirements of our code or ordinance? If it does, we're obligated to approve it. If it doesn't, you can turn it down. But it really all depends on, does it conform? If it doesn't, you can turn it down. But it really all depends on, does it conform? Legal and technical questions with regard to this. There are strict standards of review for these in the courts. Um, there must be substantial evidence, which Todd talked about a little bit earlier, must be substantial evidence for the action that you've taken in either approving or denying a land use application that's being considered under your rules, which is an administrative item, alright? So, you really have to, you, this, this is where it's important for you to establish findings. Reasons why you're either approving or denying the application, because you determined that it meets the requirements of your ordinances because, or it does not meet the requirements of your ordinances because. Um, put those rule, or put those findings down, so that somebody who may be looking at it afterwards can say, oh yeah, okay, they had a good reason for making the decision that way, and not leaving people guessing. What did, what were they thinking, what were they looking at in order to make that decision? No public clamor, there must be evidence. We'll talk about that. Um, and these are not referable. These cannot be put to a referendum vote. The proper action for an administrative decision, if somebody disagrees with it, is to file an appeal. And it goes through the appeal process. And every city is required, if you're going to do land use regulation, you have to have a land use authority, you have, first of all, you have to have a planning commission, you have to have land use authorities, and you have to have an appeal authority, um, someplace where these appeals can go, if somebody disagrees with an administrative decision. And then after the appeal authority makes their decisions, those can be appealed to the courts. And the courts will take a look at them based on all of that information, all of the stuff that we've just talked about there, alright?
Some things like that would, before it went to the court, would go to the ombudsman, he would review and say, this is how we think this is going to go.
It's not required to do that.
Right, yeah, that's, that's something that, that can be done, that's really is a service for, for citizens, for property owners. Um, but that, that's not a requirement. The appeal body, um, you know, depending on how your, your ordinances are set up, you know, could be your city council, or if you have a separate appeal, uh, body that serves as that, right? Yeah, um, go, go to the, the ombudsman for an advisory opinion, or even potential mediation services, or something of that nature is, is, can be requested by either side, and it's voluntary.
And, and that, but, but that appeal authority is final then, until it goes to court, is that?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes. The decision your appeal authority makes is, is the final decision on the city's part, and then that can be appealed to the courts. Um, okay, the kinds of things that are, are administrative actions, the review and issuance of building permits. That's usually done by your building official, um, or your plans reviewer, whoever. But you've actually, you actually have to designate them as the land use authority in order to do that, to make that, those zoning kinds of decisions before they issue the building permit. Does it meet the setback requirements? Does it meet the height requirements? Does it meet whatever other requirements you have in place for the building that they're proposing to build? This isn't building code stuff, these are the zoning related, uh, type of requirements that may go with someone who applies for a, a building permit, uh, or a permit to undertake some action. Site plan reviews, uh, pretty typical. Conditional use permits, which you just heard all about, but those are administrative actions. Um, subdivision plats and subdivision reviews. Now, our state legislature in the last session put some more, um, restrictions, I guess, or some more definition to what subdivision plats reviews are and how they're to be conducted. So you need to be aware of those. And were you all aware, you should be all aware, or at least certainly your staff should be aware, that you need to have adopted these requirements that the legislature passed in the last legislative session by, what's the deadline?
February.
By February of next year. So, everybody pretty much is going to have to amend their subdivision ordinance in order to make the, um, meet the requirements of the legislation that was passed. Um, hopefully you've heard about that. If you haven't, get on your staff and say, hey, how are we coming on that changing of our code to meet the state code for the subdivisions, okay? Uh, but subdivision plat reviews and approvals are an administrative action, so just to be aware of that. Really, any land use application, and that's defined in the state code what a land use application is, those are all administrative actions. Administrative actions do not require a public hearing. Public hearings are not required for administrative actions. Now, why would that be? We do have many instances where we have local communities, in their own codes and ordinances, they require public hearings for, like, conditional use permits. Oftentimes, it's, this has been the case, it's getting less and less, but subdivision plats. At, and that one, actually, at one time, there was a requirement in state code for subdivision plats to have a public hearing, but that was removed a number of years ago. Um, and so they're not required. Why would that be? Why would you, why would you not require a public hearing?
Because we're just defining, we're just determining what is within the law.
Yeah.
We're not making them.
Yeah.
We're just defining it, we're just verifying it complies.
What do you usually get at public hearings? You get a lot of facts? Maybe, a little bit, sometimes. Generally, what you get are opinions and emotion, right? I really don't like this. I don't think this is appropriate for our neighborhood. Todd has mentioned some of these, but I say, in almost every public hearing, you hear three things. It's going to loo- lower my property value, it's going to increase traffic, and it's going to kill children, okay? Just about every public hearing. And generally, none of those things are true. Not always, but often. They're, they're not true, but that's what the public comes with. Now, I sound like I'm really disparaging on the public. They have an absolutely appropriate role, but their, their role in administrative items is much more limited than it is for legislative items. For legislative items, have at it. Come in and tell us what you think, and what you feel, and how you think things ought to work and be in our community. That's great. That's what a legislative issue is all about. You're setting policy. You're setting the direction for your city in the future. But once you've adopted those rules and put those into place, the applicants now have a legal right to get their permit if they meet the requirements of your codes or ordinances. It's not the time to start saying, I, you know, I don't want that gas station on the corner there. I, I, I just don't want a gas station there, it's going to mess up my drive to work, and it's going to do all this stuff, and it's not the right thing to do there. Too late. The code allows it. If they meet the requirements of the code, they're entitled to go there. Um, if, if, if you don't think that's a good idea, then go through the admin, the legislative process and get it changed. But for that application you've got right now, you've got to judge it against what you, rules you have in place. And those are administrative actions, and generally, public hearings don't help with those. Generally. I say generally, because sometimes you do get some information out of them that are kind of useful. I, I, you know, I, I can give you a, a number of instances, but I know, like, in one case, uh, in a city that I was working in, there was a convenience store proposed on a corner, on a, on a vacant piece of property. Everybody thought it was going to work out pretty well, the code and ordinances allowed it. There was an elderly gentleman there who got up and he said, I'm such and such, I farmed that land for years, years and years. And what you guys don't know, and what you're not taking into account is, right there, on that corner, in that spot, there's a buried well capped down there. And you dig down there and start putting your stuff in there, you're going to deal with water that's going to start coming out, and you're going to have to deal with it. Well, nobody knew that, except he did, because he'd farmed the land. And it caused the whole project to be redesigned, to deal with that water. But that was a good thing. That was a good thing to come out of that. So, they can be useful, but often they're not. So, it's kind of a mixed bag, yeah.
So, going back to the legislative piece, for things like, uh, we recently did like the transportation element, and some of those elements of the general plan.
Right.
That are more strategic in nature.
Yeah.
Is it, I know, you know, the recommendation was not to have like a public comment section, but when you're trying to like outline a vision of a community, what's the role in gathering those type of more strategic inputs that are, you know, a little bit more like visionary and not necessarily a public hearing, like this is the way we want to, you know, implement the element?
So, um, uh, ask me again. Wait, so you're asking about what the role is, or the?
Well, just like, is there, is there a place to kind of have those more kind of high level visionary strategic discussions?
Oh, oh, I see, I see.
Hey, I just, I don't like how.
Oh, yeah. I get what you're saying, yeah, yeah. One of the things, I, I guess, one of the beefs I had throughout my career was, um, that, uh, like UDOT, for example, you know, they, they're, um, doing a big road project or something, and they would have this public hearing, and people would show up at the public hearing, but, you know, I just thought, public hearings were not a good way to do this. And a lot of times for general plans, it's the same thing. When you get to that point of doing a, a public hearing, I mean, it's usually pretty much only one-way communication. You know, the public telling you what they think, and what do they really know about what you've been considering all along? So I think, you know, for some of these higher level policy related issues, there are a lot of other things you can do that you ought to think about doing. Uh, a, a big one is having open houses, right? Where you invite the public in, and you kind of explain to them what you're thinking about and looking at, and get their comments there. Or just having strategic sessions maybe with focus groups, or a lot of nowadays with technology, having online discussions, you know, or, uh, or sites where people can come and have a look and, and express their opinion and vote. There's a lot of different things you can do besides having that one public hearing that's required before you can make a recommendation on, say, like, your, your transportation element of your general plan. And, and as a planner, I would really encourage you to do more of that kind of stuff, not just that one public hearing. But regardless of what you do, you're still required to have a public hearing, you know? So, after you do all that other stuff, then come back, and then have your public hearing. And, you know, hopefully, if you've engaged, engaged the community a lot, they'll show up at the public hearing and they go, right on, this is great, this is good, go for it. You hear that all the time, right? Was there any, another question yet?
I have a question. Um, we did this without vocalizing, excuse me, we posted it on social media.
Yeah.
Just to make sure, we wanted to kind of do what was going on.
Yep.
We don't do it with much of anything else, you know, um, because, you know, things might not affect everyone, but I wonder if you know of any communities that regularly do that, pushing it on social media, putting it in newsletters, that kind of thing?
Oh, yeah. I, I think a lot of communities are doing that now. They're, it's really gotten to be a much bigger thing. Especially, communities, a number of communities now are getting a public engagement director, or somebody that's, whose purpose is to really try and get the public involved, or at least aware of the kinds of things. And they, they use everything they can. Newsletters, social media, mailouts, whatever, you know? Putting a, putting a flyer in the water bill, or whatever.
And even the data behind that, right? Like, like Wilfred said, you know, putting a flyer into the water bill, you're going to know, hey, we sent out thirty-five hundred water bills, right? So, thirty-five hundred advertisements went out, but you don't have any idea how many people actually viewed that. But the online type of items, you actually get all the data behind that. You can, you can see how many clicks, when those clicks happened, how long they were on that page. I mean, you can have all of that type of data there to really then be able to help, certainly as a staff member, communicate how you worked to communicate with the public, how it was received, how many people got it, what the engagement seemed to be, and then you can talk about any of the responses that you got there as well.
Yeah. Um, as I mentioned, no public clamor, as we talked about a little bit. Um, administrative items have to be determined on the basis of facts and evidence, whether it complies with your code or ordinance. Um, public hearings, because they are, the nature of them can get us in trouble on administrative items. Um, because everybody tends to kind of have this, you know, sympathy for the people that are up there saying, I don't want that place next door to my house. And the planning commissions are, are sitting there and going, yeah, you know, that's probably true, I probably wouldn't want it next door to my house either. He's got a good point. I think maybe we ought to not vote for this. Let me tell you, as we already mentioned, I was the planner for that Davis County versus Clearfield. The interesting thing was, I was a planner on both sides of that issue. Um, I worked for Davis County, um, and I was a planner employed by Davis County, but Davis County had contracts with a number of the cities around the county, who at the time, uh, weren't big enough or didn't feel like they wanted to hire their own planner, and the county had been offering this service for a while. So, I had the assignment, and I was working for Clearfield City as their planner. And then we had this, um, it was a rehabilitation, a group home essentially. Drug and alcohol rehabilitation center where they were going to buy a couple of older houses. They were going to convert them into, um, multi-bed facilities where people would go, if they were having drug or alcohol problems, and do treatment and rehabilitation there. And, um, that was allowed as a conditional use in Clearfield City. But, oh my gosh, the reaction from the neighborhood was, the room was packed, and had to have police officers there, and the whole bit. And the interesting thing about that was, um, you know, I mean, at one point, the, the chair of the planning commission said, all those here who are in favor of this proposal, raise your hand. Nobody raised their hand. All of those here who are against it, and everybody just, I mean, there was a big roar, and people jumped up, you know? And they were like, we're against it. Um, with all of the comment that was going on, and, and one of the comments that people kept making was, this, crime rates will go up in our neighborhood. We'll be really affected by the crime rates. And as I mentioned, police officers were at the meeting, and the planning commission chair saw that the chief was in, was standing at the back, and so he asked the chief to come up. And he said, chief, you know, a lot of people are saying that crime's going to go up in these neighborhoods. Is that the case with these kinds of facilities? And the chief said, you know, if they're well managed and well run, you really don't see, there's no increase in crime in the neighborhood, if they're well managed and well run. Um, the planning commission ultimately denied the approval of the conditional use permit on the basis that, several things, but one of them was that crime would increase in the neighborhood. Now, where did they get that from? From the neighbors. The chief was there and said it wouldn't. But they decided to, that they were going to say what the public said. And then another reason that they gave was, the neighbors don't want it. The neighbors don't want it. It was appealed to the city council. Pretty much the same thing happened with the city council. They said the same things. And when it went to the courts, we have the public clamor decision, where the court said, you know, the, the, the opinions of the neighbors are not a basis for making an administrative decision. Um, and so, you get into trouble with public hearings for administrative items unless, uh, one thing that really helps is to help explain to the public, if you are going to have a public hearing for an administrative item, tell them right up front and say, look, we're obligated to approve this if they meet all of the requirements of our ordinance. Staff has just told us they meet these requirements. If you have any information that would be contrary to that, let us know. But just hearing your opinion about it is not going to be beneficial, because we can't make a decision based on that. Um, and so, you know, just helping to explain to the public if you're going to have public hearings on those. Again, evidence. It really does require that you make your decision based on the evidence. Um, you know, in the interest of time, I'm not going to go in, the appeal authorities have a whole nother basis for making decisions, but, um, as we already mentioned, as I showed earlier with the, uh, agenda, your, um, your notices of the meetings, first of all, you're required to give at least twenty-four hours' notice for, uh, for having a public hearing, or, I'm sorry, a public meeting. For public hearings, is there a minimum in the state code? Not, no.
There's, there are minimums for certain prescribed actions for your general plan, you have some.
Yeah.
But other than that, it's, it's what your ordinance says.
Yeah. And generally, because, you know, you want to give people time to plan for and so on, most jurisdictions do like ten days' notice in advance for a public hearing. You have to provide notice at least ten days in advance. Um, but for, as, for some things, there is a required time period, but not for all. Um, and so, just make sure that you meet all of those requirements for notification, uh, on those. Uh, let's see. Um, yeah, just generally on that. Rob, did you want to say anything about that public noticing, or are we good?
You, uh, you know, I've just, I've just always, um, found it to be a really good idea for staff, uh, for there to be a, a solid checklist that they're able to use to ensure that they're, they're going to hit all of those items there. And then I've always found it very useful as well to make sure, as a planning commission, um, that you are expecting your staff to, um, ensure that the public noticing has been met as part of their staff report, to include that as part of the record.
Right.
Right? So.
Right.
Always found that to be best practice as well, so, you know, we, we would always tell the, the planning commissioners, um, if that's not listed within the staff report, which it absolutely should be, um, but if for any reason it was, it was not, um, within the staff report, please ask us directly that question to ensure that it is. report, please ask us directly that question to ensure that it is on the actual record.
Right. All right. I think, uh, oh, and I, I just have a little deal here about, make your notices so that people know what you're doing, you know, a little bit understandable. So this is a good example, you know, of kind of explaining what's, what's in your public notice. But how do you, you know, Taylor's Tovin Grub is holding a public meeting to discuss a conditional use permit, that's much more specific. On this one, you kind of get, look, look at how this public notice reads. The hearing is to obtain comments on regarding the proposed change to the county planning and zoning ordinance. Map parcel A three hundred dash two requested by John and Marion Butler. The request is to change the zoning from A twenty to RR one slash two. You know exactly what's happening there, right? Not so much. I mean, it technically meets the requirements, but most people are not going to have a clue from reading that. What in the world? First of all, where is it? And what is it that they're trying to do? It's really hard to determine from that unless you are the planner, or somebody on, that has a really good familiarization. Something more like this would be a little better. Taylor's Tovin Grub is holding a public meeting to discuss conditional use permit, to allow Doug Taylor to expand his woodworking business and build a suitable shop garage on residential property directly south of his home at four thirty-two South, two hundred West in Emery Town. Meeting will take place immediately following the Emery Town Council meeting on the date and time. This will also set the groundwork to establish a five oh one C three non-profitable foundation. Anyway, you can see this, you know what's happening on this one, right? Good description of what's going on. The other one, make them more transparent. Make sure that people understand what's happening when you provide those kinds of notices. All right. That's all I got. I think we're at about time. So Rob, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you very much, Wilf. Greatly appreciated.
Hey, Rob, before you go.
Yeah.
I got to correct one thing.
Absolutely.
I gave you bad information on the referendum. The stay happens when the signatures are adequate. Oh, okay. So it's not the application, the signatures has, have to be adequate before the stay goes into effect. How many signatures? It depends on the application, the nature of it, and, I mean, that, that formula is hard. Your recorder will have to actually calculate that number, it's different everywhere. But there's a forty-five day period to gather those signatures, and in that period, if they have enough signatures at a certain point in time, then your recorder's obligated to issue a stay. But they've got forty-five days.
Which is typically your, your appeal period anyways, correct? Yeah, so.
Yeah.
And, yeah, thank you, thank you, Wilf and Todd. Greatly appreciated. Your years of experience obviously help everybody around you to understand how to operate better and, and how to make sure that our communities are implementing the items that we need to implement in order to be not only protected legally, but also to engage with the community appropriately and, and best practice, and really have the type of outcomes that you're looking for within your communities. Before I close out, if, if I could, there was the one question about the appeal and, and the ombudsman's office. And, and while my position is newer within the ombudsman's office, I like to, to always point out that I'm the only non-attorney in, in the office. I'm, I'm a land use planner by, by trade and, and not an attorney. However, being housed within the ombudsman's office, I, I highly, highly value everything that is done there and want to make sure that agencies always do understand, first, what the ombudsman is, and second, you know, how you can have access to them. So the ombudsman, while they're housed in the Department of Commerce in the state of Utah, they're a neutral, independent agency, whose entire charge is to assist in protecting the property rights of Utah citizens. So if, if a, if a citizen or a local agency ever has any type of legal challenges that are land use related, you can reach out to the ombudsman and be able to get some legal advice and some assistance there. That's typically going to be done through what's called an advisory opinion process. And that advisory opinion, what will happen is, is the, the ombudsman's office, the attorneys within the office, will take all the facts of that case, that application, I shouldn't call it a case, excuse me, the, the application or the, the actual issue, and they will then take case history and, and law, take these items together and create an advisory opinion that could then be utilized by both parties to try to come to some type of agreeance with each other outside of having to go through the traditional litigation process. So the, the intent there is to try to save, obviously, time and money, in, in all honesty, and help people be able to come to the table and work through these items, utilizing the mechanism that is the advisory opinion, which really serves as a white paper of, based upon case law and based upon what state law says, here is likely the action that would be taken by a judge based upon the facts of whatever it is that they're looking at. Again, it is a voluntary type of item, and the intent there is to be able to help agencies and, and property owners be able to come to the table and discuss any type of issue or challenge that they're having there, and be able to come to a, a agreeance amongst each other, either through, you know, mediation or discussion, and to try to move on and get to that place without having to go to, you know, formal litigation. Not trying to take business away from, from Utah, of course, but that, that's, that's what the ombudsman's office does. So just wanted to make sure it's, it's really that potential step that if you wanted to take, you could take in between the, the appeal body, you know, having made their decision, and then formal litigation. If you wanted to approach that in the middle, you could certainly do that, and it's a great option. And it is unique in, in Utah. You will see ombudsman, you know, a, a lot in, in the eastern US, but it's, it's very, very unique to see it in the western US. And I really think that it works in Utah, simply because Utahns typically have more of a desire to work together and get to resolutions and have progress on items. And so I think a model like that works really, really well, well here, in, in my opinion. Yeah.
You said it's a neutral body, but there is earlier commentary that Utah tends to lean very heavily towards property owners' rights versus, do you, do you have opinions on if the ombudsman tends to issue their advisory opinions with that lens that, you know, the state is generally more geared towards property right owners?
Before Todd jumps in on that one, I, I would just say, of course, the ombudsman, what they're going to do is take the facts of the case, and they're going to compare it, case law, and then they're going to take what state law says, right? And those are the items that they're going to utilize there. So, you know, neutral and independent in, in, in as far as, they're not going to try to pick a side in any way, they're simply going to say, taking the information based upon the laws and, and case, case studies and, and state law, and they're then going to say, this is likely what a judge would find based upon that. Under the lens, of course, of the, the state of Utah and the laws of the state of Utah.
Yeah. I'll, I'll give you a little bit of a longer answer. That is correct. They, they interpret the law and apply it as they understand it. Their understanding is better than most district court judges. Their understanding, it is, because district court judges do divorces and criminal stuff, and it, they don't focus on land use law. The ombudsman's office does, and so they have a little better lens into what the law is and what it has been. I will tell you, at the formation of the ombudsman's office, I was terrified. I thought it was a horrible thing. I have pictures of Craig Call, the very first private property officer in the state of my office, with devil horns. I, I was terrified of what this was going to do to land use law in the state, and I think it's been nothing but good. There are decisions that have come out of the ombudsman's office that I disagree with. I think they were wrong. That's maybe one in ten of, I don't know how many opinions have been issued out of that office.
Almost three hundred now, yeah.
Yeah, i- it's just, it's a small number. I think they are, I think they are neutral and independent in the way they do their business and the way they see their role. I would have been uncomfortable saying that several years back, I'm not uncomfortable saying it now. And I, and I think there's a couple of factors and reasons for that. One, I think the progression of the office has been terrific. I think our body of land use law continues to get a little more well-developed over time. We don't have a lot of cases in this state, but everyone we get adds to the understanding of the land use bar and the omb, ombudsman's office, and helps them interpret in a way that I think is a little more balanced. And I also think we had a period of time in this state where, candidly, there was not a good check on municipal land use action unless somebody wanted to bring a lawsuit, and that was expensive and hard, and it was candidly easier for developers to get along and go along, and they, they lost money on their projects, but they saved money in the long run by not paying legal fees to go challenge a city action and waste time. Right? We had that situation for a long time in this state, and things went unchecked. And so when the ombudsman's office came in, there was a perception that, wow, they're really changing things. Well, in fact, what they were doing, I think, was just giving an even-handed interpretation to the law, that we never really had in any good form before. So are we still a property rights-respecting state? Yes, we are, because our law is that way. Our legislation is written that way, and that's what the ombudsman's office is helping to interpret. So, but are they even-handed in their review and interpretation of it? Yeah, I think they are. And my, my personal concerns about that office from twenty, maybe twenty-five years ago now, have not been, you know, well-founded at all. I think it's been a good thing, so.
Thank you, Todd. And has Craig signed that picture?
I asked him to.
That's terrific.
I had a question.
Yes.
If a, a person that's, you know, come before the city and the city has acted on a, a certain item, and they file a, you know, a hearing with the ombudsman's office, how long should the cities have to expect some sort of decision will be reached or some type of mediation be reached?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. It, it wouldn't be that they would apply for a hearing if they were to, if they were to submit an application for an advisory opinion. And, and again, that's not a binding item, it's really information that, that is intended to be utilized by both sides. Typically, because there's only three attorneys in, in the ombudsman's office, and the amount of requests that come in, you will typically end up seeing about three to four months before an advisory opinion is, is returned to the requesting party. And, and then at that time, depending upon whether or not they then further request, will you help us with mediation, you know, or we'd like to have additional discussions about this advisory opinion or something of that nature, it can simply go on from there. But usually, that initial draft is about a three to four month average. I, I will say that, that we, there has been the request to, to, to the legislature for additional funding that would allow for more attorneys to be within the office, for one more attorney to be within the office, and the entire hope and intent there in that request was to be able to speed up that timeline, because time is just so incredibly important for the local agencies and the developers and the property owners. Yeah, it, it absolutely is. Yeah. My specific role within the ombudsman's office is to coordinate land use training and, and to try to connect those resources and all the various training resources throughout the state. So to work with the Utah Land Use Institute, the Utah League of Cities and Towns, you know, the Governor's Office of Planning and Budget, the American Planning Association, the Utah Chapter, all the different organizations that, that work with training in any way, and it's, it's to work with all of them and try to coordinate all of those efforts and really make sure that the resources and the education is getting out there and, and helping. So my, my role is newer to that office, and again, I'm not an attorney, but certainly comfortable enough with what they do, I think, to talk about what it is without messing it up too bad. All right. One more rewind, reminder, if you have not already, please be sure to write down your name, your email address and everything, to ensure that you're going to get credit for the two hours tonight. And again, thank you so much for your time. Have a great night, everybody.